And so I will have to leave you for too many people here. Okay, Brenda, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda and you have the final agenda at your desk.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion second to adopt agenda, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Need approval of the August 9, 2012 minutes or any additions or corrections? Need to know at this time. Motion second to approve the minutes of August 9, 2012, all in favor? Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. No council members in the audience. Okay, any items to be deferred or withdrawn, Brenda?
Yes, there are three items to be deferred. The first item is on page four of your agenda, item one. This is a request for approval of a neighborhood landmark development plan for properties located at 609 and 611 Wedgewood Avenue, Zoned R6, and this is to permit a full-service restaurant, and the recommendation is to defer indefinitely. The next item is item two, also on page four. This is a request for final plat approval to create five lots and a variance to the subdivision regulations for lot frontage on property located at 596 North Dupont Avenue, Zoned RM20, and the recommendation is to defer to the September 27 Planning Commission meeting. And finally, item three, also on page four. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at 4100 Wyoming Avenue, Zoned RS 7.5, and the recommendation is to defer indefinitely.
Okay, we've got a request for items, deferral for items one, two, and three. Is there a motion to accept those? Motion second to defer items one, two, and three, all in favor? Any opposed? Items on consent.
Okay, before I read the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert within the Davidson County Chancery Court or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Now I'm going to move to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. There'll be no individual public hearing, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Starting on page five, item five, the periodic review and approved SP district known as Lake Providence to determine its completeness, located at 4412, 4416, and 4424 Bast Avenue and at Nolansville Pike unnumbered, and it's approved for auto repair, auto sales used, office and three single-family lots, and one duplex lot, and the recommendation is to find the SP district active. Next is item six on page five. It's a request rezon from SPR to RM20, a zoning for property at 24 Lincoln Street, and the recommendation is to approve. Next is item seven, it's on page six of your agenda. This is a request to amend a portion of the Nashville Village PUD for a portion of property located at 171 Bell Road, Zoned R10, to permit residential uses not to exceed 100 units, consistent with the scale of development along Bell Road where a 100-unit five-story building was previously approved, and staff recommends approval with conditions. The next item is item eight, also on page six. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Lyons Head Village planned unit development on property located at 40 White Bridge Road, Zoned SCC, to permit a 12,693 square-foot multi-tenant building replacing a 6,500 square-foot restaurant, and the staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Finally, on page six of your agenda, item number nine. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on properties located at 2902 and 2904 West Linden Avenue, Zoned RS 7.5. Oh, okay, that one will not on the consent agenda. So that's the end of this consent agenda.
Okay, it's been the recommendation of the staff that we set items five, six, seven, and eight, vote on, those on consent. Is there a motion? Motion, motion second to approve those items on consent, all in favor? Any opposed? For the audience, two items will be heard today. Public hearing will be item number four on the fee waiver and item number nine, which is West Moreland Place subdivision.
This is item four on your agenda, and it is a text amendment to Section 1740, 740C of the code, which deals with fee waivers for applications made for zoning requests. Currently, the fees can be waived by council members for certain rezonings, and these include rezonings that would take a property from a more intense residential district to another, to a lesser intense residential district, rezoning from an office, commercial, or industrial district to a residential district, rezoning 10 or more parcels from an SP district to another base zoning district, and also to apply UDO, Historic Preservation District, a Neighborhood Conservation District, or a UZO district. The proposed text amendment would add a fifth category for fee waivers, and it would be an amendment to or a cancellation of a planned unit development after the Planning Commission has determined the PUD to be inactive. So this would be...
Get the vast chair in position here, so...
So this fee would be, for example, we had recently periodic review of planned unit development in Nashville Village where you found a number of the sites to be inactive, but recommended they stay the same. The council member could bring one of those applications to you and not have to pay the fee to file that application. That's what this would do. And the staff recommendation of this text amendment is that the commission actually take no official action, as it's the council's prerogative to set fees for rezoning.
Okay, this item is open for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak, if you'd come to the microphone. Seeing another one, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion second, close the public hearing. The recommendation from the staff is to not take a position on this bill, so is anyone who want to make any comments or make a motion?
Is this been the staff recommendation for each time we've looked at this?
Yes, it has. You may recall the previous one, oops, sorry, the 10 or more parcels in an SP, we did that about a year ago, and it was the same recommendation, not to take an official position.
Okay. Motion?
Move the approved staff recommendation.
Not to take a position, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that is now official. Greg, we're ready for the item number nine. Excuse me.
Okay, item nine is a request to subdivide property in the subdivision called West Moreland Place. The properties, it consists of two properties on West Linden Avenue. This I-440 is just to the south of the site. It currently consists of two lots with a home on each lot. The staff is recommending approval of the request. This is a closer view of the property. This shows the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. This just to show you that it is close to that overlay, but it's not within it. This is the request. This shows the existing two lots, the red line down the middle, subdividing as proposed. It will add an additional line, creating three lots. All the lots will be a little over 9,000 square feet. Because the lots are less than 50 square, or 50 feet at the frontage, they're required to share access, or in this case, there's an alley, so they have to have access at the alley. The applicant has agreed to that, and there's a note on the plat that limits access to that alley at the rear. The zoning is single-family residential, RS 7.5. It requires a 7,500 square-foot lot. All three lots meet the minimum zoning requirements. This is in the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan. The land use policy is residential medium. It promotes all types of residential, including single-family, two-family, and multifamily with a density of between four and nine units per acre. The proposed density for this is just slightly over four, so it's at the low end of the policy and is consistent with the policy. Inclusion staff is recommending approval as consistent with all zoning requirements and the land use policy.
Thank you, Jason. Item is open for public hearing. If the applicants in the audience, they'd be allowed 10 minutes. You can keep two back for rebuttal if you'd like.
I'm going to keep nine back for rebuttal, Mr. Chairman. I'm John Brittle with Village Real Estate Services, and I'm the broker for the buyer of this property, and thank you for considering this three-lot subdivision, and very rarely do I get to come before anybody of the federal, state, or local government and ask for no variance and no changes. And we feel this is very straightforward, and we look forward to doing three single-family homes here that match this neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Please come to, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
My name is Maddie Sappenfield. I live at 2905 West Linden, and I appreciate the Corriere's and their association with the neighborhood, but I do have some, I do have some reservations. The first is parking. You've already mentioned that there will be parking in the back, but when that house at 2902 was rented, you know, then the parking was very crowded on the street. So I'm looking at three houses where there are now two, and I'm seeing competition for parking. The next, the other thing I have, the other concern I have is water. I have all the water, and this is kind of a little bit uphill for me, and the water runs down the hill and runs onto my property. I've spent $10,000 redoing my front yard. I have a berm and a French drain and, you know, to keep the water from, I'm sorry, from pooling at my front door. And then I have that, I don't know what you call it, where they encase your basement, you know, that dry zone stuff. So water is a real problem. I'd be interested to know if, if the developers were going to do any kind of permeable concrete or any kind of, anything to make sure that the water doesn't run off, because I'm looking at this, and you saw from the pictures that there's a lot of grassy area now, but when I look at this, I see a lot of concrete, and I would be interested in the runoff. I bring with me two letters from two other neighbors who are also concerned with water, and one is concerned with the integrity of the neighborhood. We don't want these...
I'll give you a couple more.
Okay, we just, we don't want, we want the houses to look like the rest of the neighborhood, and that's about, I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And you, you live next door to these two lots?
I live across the street.
Across the street.
Yeah, which is downhill from those two lots, so a lot of water. It's not much of a hill, but it's a little bit of a hill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, you've got two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like.
Those are obviously valid concerns. I would like to say that we don't know exactly what the houses are going to be, because I don't know who is going to be building them just yet, so, but I would say that there's no, we don't have a view of plans, because we don't have house plans yet. So the, I don't believe there's going to be a lot of concrete for us, just to answer that part of the question. The driveways and if there are garages, they will be in the back on the alley. I also believe that, in my recent experience, we've dealt with stormwater every time we get a permit on a house, and I hope that if there's a problem there that I don't know about, that I'm going to look into as the real estate broker, is that that will be our problem also, if there's a stormwater problem, and we're going to make sure, and if somebody might address to the public, that we will go through a stormwater review, at least a process on each permit to show where the water's going to go. And I don't, since it's not a historic district, we always strive to make the houses look like they belong in the neighborhood, and fortunately, that's, everybody has their opinion about that. So I would just say, though, that we will be trying to direct our water in a way that will not affect our neighbors.
Could I ask a question before you leave? Please, sir. Do you plan to relocate either one or both of the current homes, or they're going to be done away with, and start fresh on all three?
We'll be starting fresh.
On all three, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? I'll start with you, Stuart.
Thank you. Well, this is an area within a mile of my house, and I actually know Ms. Sappenfield, she's a longtime neighbor there and active member of the neighborhood, and she had had the same questions that I would have, and that have had, when there was development right across the street from me. And it was a surprise to me when I went through that with a fairly large development across Bernard, to find out how far we had come in terms of stormwater planning. It's, it's a surprise to, a lot of folks have lived in Nashville a long time, because we've had our share of problems after everyone assured folks that they weren't going to be a problem. But it's my impression that we have come a long way, particularly for a relatively modest expansion like this, that is within the zoning. Is there a comment we could hear from stormwater about that, just, just to remind us what goes through the process? I mean, what the process consists of to make sure this does not create more stormwater issues.
Well, hello, commissioners. Steve Nishy with Metro Stormwater. We actually have come a long way. It was maybe five years ago where somebody could subdivide maybe one lot to three lots or two into three, and we wouldn't have any, you know, we wouldn't have any regulations, we wouldn't have any kind of review whatsoever. Today, we will have three different reviews on this. We'll review each lot as they come in for a new permit. So I won't be personally reviewing it, but the lady sits behind me reviews all a single-family. I will get in touch with this lady, and I'll give her my information, and I will, and I'll have her contact me, and I'll contact my employee, my coworker, and I'll share her concerns, and we'll keep a special close eye on, on this development for her.
And the, the regulations we have now, when there is a subdivision, is there not a requirement that before final approval, there has to be a finding that it will not increase any stormwater issues? Is that the way to say it, or not?
Yeah, most of our regulations are designed for larger developments. It's not really, you know, it's not really zoned in for like a single-family. It's more zoned in for, say, a commercial site, maybe a gas station, a McDonald's, or maybe a 10-lot subdivision. A one-lot or two-lot subdivision, it's, we don't get detention ponds for stuff like that.
Right, right.
If we did, then we would have a zillion detention ponds, and then that would be a big maintenance burden. They would be very small, they'd be, it's just not, no city really does that. But what we will do is we will look at where the roof drains go, and we will try to do our best to make sure that nobody's impacted with it.
That was what I was getting at. There's a goal for no extra impact? Not even for a small-scale expansion?
Right, well, you know, what we'll try to do is, you know, even with larger expansions, right now, every goal is flow reduction, not volume reduction. So if you go, you know, just a small building to a bigger building, you could, you could reduce flows, but you can't really reduce, reduce the volume. And no really, no really city's really tuned in for that. We do have a volume five that we just came out with that, that does have some volume reduction.
So the review you're speaking about, the three reviews, really has to do with how the design is and where the water's going to go, not how much there's going to be, but where it's going to be directed?
Exactly.
With the view to where neighboring properties and across-the-street properties.
What we'll try to do is we'll just make sure if, just say lot number three, if it, if it tends to drain towards West Linden, what we'll do is we'll make sure that they don't try to reroute it to drain towards, say, lot 53. But every single-family residence these days will have to come in with, with a plan submitted either, either by registered engineer or surveyor.
All right. Judy?
Thank you, and thank you, Stormwater, and that answers all of my questions. I know that we don't do development where we allow water to drain onto the neighbors, so you can rest assured with that, and I hope that you feel a sense of assurance and confidence in the process.
Phil?
The most important statement about this whole process for this particular item, it says, "Request meets all zoning and subdivision requirements." You can see that on the screen. So basically, everything is in order. But I see this as a fantastic opportunity for Ms. Sappenfield to express her concerns and for the representative of the owner to work with her, since she is obviously a representative of the neighborhood, she's got letters from other neighbors. So I think it's a great opportunity to just improve the neighborhood. I look at it that way. Thank you.
Phil? Hunter?
Derek? Greg? Tom, Ray? Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, I didn't see anything. When'd you sneak in? I apologize.
I move approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion second to approve of staff recommendations, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything from historic? Hunter? Anything from Parks? Phil?
Our first meeting will be the day after Labor Day at 12:00 at Parks Headquarters. Our last meeting was rather quiet, no significant business taking place.
Phil, anything from the council? Doug, anything on the executive report or executive?
A couple of quick comments. The Antioch Community Plan update, the next meeting is next Thursday, the 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at Lakeshore Christian Church, 5434 Belle Forte Lane East. That's near the Hickory Hollow Mall. And Craig's given me some related information regarding to our website. We now have 121 separate web pages on the site, and the one that's set up for public outreach on the plan, on the general plan update, or is this the Antioch Plan update?
The Antioch Plan update.
Or the Antioch Plan update, has, is the 11th most used with over 2,700 page views since it went up in the spring. So that's pretty impressive that it's been hit that many times. But other than that, I believe that's it.
Thank you. There will not be a meeting on September 13th. There will be a meeting on September 27th, which will probably be very lengthy, so be prepared.
And Chairman, I think we're aware that there may be a request for a special hearing due to the fact that we're not going to have that hearing on the 13th, and if the commissioners could just let us, let Kelly in our office know about your availability in the weeks, that week, for the possibility of a specially-called hearing, that would be very helpful for us, either maybe even the 11th or the 12th, if you could let us know what your availability might be.
Well, you're going to send some out, though, polling, so that I don't mind this, right?
Is there a specific matter that you're requiring?
Be better. We'll never do it.
Well, yeah, there may be a specific matter that's, no one has made the request yet, but we've just been asked questions about whether or not, what the procedure is for a specially-called hearing.
What, Kelly just sent out an email asking everybody, that's Monday, the 11th through the 14th, I believe, 11th, 12th, 13th. We know we can't do it on the 13th, so...
Would that, would that, would we take the agenda that was supposed to be on the 13th, the entire agenda, or just for a single item?
No, that'd be just for a single item, assuming that's the only item that requests a special hearing. It would just be for that one item.
Is there any reason why we couldn't take?
Tell us what circumstances or reschedule.
I'd have to have the agenda in front of me, but I, my concern, and I suspect Ms. Jones' concern, would be about notice issues pertaining to items that would be on the agenda if we took the entire agenda up at that time.
What allows someone to come in for a special hearing?
Well, either, either, Chairman, either you can call a special hearing, or three members of the commission can request a special hearing, and at their request, they can identify what the subject is that they want to address in that special hearing, or you can.
There's no criteria as to what the item has to be, significance, importance, or...
No, that's, that's up to the commission about whether or not they feel like it's, it's worthy of taking a...
It could be a two-lot subdivision or a rezoning of the entire county.
That would be up to the commission to decide.
So are you saying that in order to have a special hearing, that three commissioners have to request that? An individual in the community can?
No, an individual in the community could not call a special hearing. It would either have to be three members of the commission or the chairman. Let me make sure I've got my rules here in front of me.
It's rule number six under your, under your meetings, special meetings. A special meeting may be called by the chairperson or upon written request of three or more commissioners.
You're right, we would still have to have a quorum to be able to take any actions at that meeting. Which is why it's important for us to know whether people are available or not.
Well, this, this would have to relate to one of the items that was supposed to be on that agenda, then.
No, it could relate to anything.
We could wish the chairman a happy birthday, probably.
Yes, we could call a meeting to wish the chairman a happy birthday, which is...
Could be two-lot subdivision or rezoning the entire county, so it could be of any significance. Now, these, these three commissioners can't get together and discuss if they...
No, no. And that's, and that's one of the reasons why I'm requesting that all the communications go through our office and not among the commissioners. And our office will alert you.
Whenever Chris comes in and they can vote, if you've got three affirmative votes to hold a special meeting, then you can do it.
Yes, sir.
Could I, could I ask a timing question? Like, does it have to be at 4:00 in the afternoon, or could you have it another time during...
We could have it at any time.
Well, I think in the memo then asked about, give us some options on times, too, in addition to the date.
I'll ask her to make it as open-ended as possible to give everyone the opportunity to let us know what your calendars look like for that week.
Yeah, just, this is, it's an unusual thing to think about, but of course, with, with missing a meeting, and by the way, I hate that we're doing it, but I realize that half of us at least are missing it. It's not even close, from some of the responses I got when I inquired about it by email. It is unusual, but just to clarify on my mind, it's that three people can't just meet out there. One person would have an idea, either hearing about something, a request from some person made to them and said, "I'd like to request if two other people want to," and then it goes to those three people. We cannot talk among ourselves until there is such a thing, but then if three people request it, then, then it can be scheduled if there's a quorum.
Right, you cannot, you cannot talk among yourselves about any of these issues at any time other than at these meetings or the publicly noticed meetings. Getting back to, we had asked everybody to just communicate with our office, and then we'll notify all the commissioners as we move forward.
Hunter?
Doug, would this be a public hearing?
Yes.
So notice, there is time to get notice.
There would, depending on when we get the request and we get it out to the commissioners, there may or may not be.
Time for notification?
Well, there's not, I mean, I believe that we have to give the commissioners each five days notice prior to the hearing, but as far as the public goes, there are, there's no hard, fast date that the courts require for public notice, nor do, I believe, we have in our rules, any set time that we have to, it has to just be reasonable notice to give the public an opportunity to, to be notified of the hearing and to be able to participate. So without answering your question with an exact date and the number of days or time, that's what the court's looking for.
But there's, there's not enough time to give notice for items that are on that agenda? I mean, the question was asked, he has to give some of the attention.
Well, that gets back to, depending on the type of item that we're taking up on that specially-called meeting. If you've got a rezoning, then we've got some issues regarding our other rules regarding notice... notice to the public that we require, that you wouldn't be able to accomplish in the dates between now and the 11th. So that's why I say there are some issues that, due to notice requirements that we already have established, you wouldn't be able to achieve, so...
So the week of the 11th's the earliest it could be, if you got a request tomorrow?
Is the week of the 11th the earliest that it could be? No, I, I wouldn't say that, because, getting back to what you asked earlier about what a specially-called meeting could be held for, we could, we could hold it for a variety of things, and for that purpose, we could have one a couple of days from now, if we chose to. Well, no, it'd have to be at least five days from now, because we'd have to give notice to all the commissioners. But we could have it as soon as five days from the date in which we give everyone here all you can, all the commissioners' notice.
If there weren't another rule.
If there weren't another rule precluding. And if the, just to throw this wrench in there, if the Commission didn't choose to suspend its rules in some way. Just in case you were able to follow me before, I thought I'd add that.
You gotta have a meeting to be able to suspend your rules.
Yes, absolutely. You'd have to call a meeting to suspend the rules unless you've been there right now.
Any other comments? Stand the jury.